So hello and welcome to the latest Covid-19 media briefing. It's Friday, the 1st of October. This briefing is brought to you by Nottingham City Council, Notts County Council and the NHS to give you an opportunity to get the latest updates on our response to the Covid-19 pandemic. Our panel today is David Johns, consultant in public health for Nottingham City, Jonathan Gribbin, director of public health for Notts County, and Amanda Sullivan, who's the council officer of the NHS in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. And brief apologies for Jonathan Gribbin. He's having technical issues today, so we've got audio, not video. The usual format applies, so our panellists will give an opening update on Covid-19, then we'll open the floor to questions. When we get to that, if you raise your hand and it's one question and one follow-up question, can I ask you to remain on mute with the cameras off until it's your turn to ask a question? And for the purpose of the recording, when you identify yourself, when you ask your question, if you could just identify who you are and what media you represent, that would be really helpful. So we have that on record. So if everyone's happy with that, I'll hand over first to David Johns from Nottingham City.
Yes, thank you very much, Steve. So we saw relatively stable but high case rates throughout August. And in the last few weeks before school term started, we saw a fairly rapid decline in cases, reaching a low of 211 cases per 100,000 in Nottingham City by the 10th of September. But once again, now we are starting to see an increase in our case rates. So in the last, in the seven days to the 25th of September, we saw 855 cases, which equates to a rate of 253 per 100,000. And that's a 19% increase on the previous seven days. So over the last few months, we've tracked the national picture. And this recent increase is in keeping with that seen across England. And as such, the rate in Nottingham remains lower than the England average, which is at 334 per 100,000. The rise that we're seeing in Nottingham and that's been seen across England in large part is due to increasing cases amongst primary and secondary school aged children. You know, there are increased number of opportunities for transmission for children, be it in or outside of school at the moment. And in recent days, we have also seen a small uptick in the cases amongst adults in those households with children as well. In Nottingham City, that's particularly important as we have seen some of our lowest uptake of vaccination in that 25 to 40 year age band. So whilst there have been some increases amongst some of our younger residents, this has not moved into our older age groups where we have a better vaccine uptake. And seeing our case rates going up again highlights why it's important to remind people of the simple measures they can continue to take to protect our local communities. Some of those being that traditional message of hands, face, space and fresh air remain key. So simple actions such as letting fresh air in if you're meeting indoors with people, washing your hands regularly and being respectful of others' space when out and about in the city are all simple measures we can take to reduce the risk of transmission. And I'm sure, sorry, I'm sure everyone has noticed a slide in the number of people who are wearing face coverings on public transport or in supermarkets, for example. And I want to encourage people to wear face marking crowded and in closed settings where you come into contact with people you do not normally meet, such as in shops or in pubs when you're walking around. And you should be looking to wear face masks on public transport, for instance, as well. In terms of testing, we have a good participation in PCR testing. That's the testing available to those with symptoms. And we continue to have good local capacity and access to rapid testing for those who don't have symptoms. And we continue to have that community testing centre in Ice and Green and several mobile testing sites around the city to support those with their symptoms to get tested on a regular basis. And testing and self-isolation continue to be key to our efforts in controlling the spread of Covid-19. If you have symptoms, no matter how mild, please go out and get a PCR test. If you receive a positive test result or are in close contact with a case and you haven't been fully vaccinated, please also self-isolate as requested. Getting vaccinated remains an important protection against the most severe impacts of Covid-19. NHS colleagues will talk more about vaccinations, but I think it's fair to say that young people are leading the way in Nottingham City. Young people have demonstrated their understanding of the importance of vaccination by stepping forward and getting vaccinated. In a matter of weeks, almost half of our 16 to 17 year olds in Nottingham City have had their first dose. And amongst 18 to 19 year olds, that figure is heading towards 80%. So young people in Nottingham City are acting as fantastic role models, including for those older adults who remain hesitant. And while we may be moving towards boosters, it's not too late to have your first or second jab. As we know, it does make a huge difference and keep you and those around you safe. And I'll stop there. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, David. We'll hand over to Jonathan Gribbin. And again, bear with us because Jonathan has audio but not video.
Good morning, colleagues. Yep, sorry about the technical glitches this morning, but I'm pleased to be with you again. And for Nottinghamshire County, let me set the picture, which is broadly similar to what we see across the country, which is a picture of rates of coronavirus rising right across the county. In Nottinghamshire County as a whole, the rate now stands at 447 per 100,000. And that compares with an England average of 334 per 100,000. There's some variation within the county. So at, in Bassetlaw, for example, we see a rate of 521 per 100,000 at the moment. And in Newwick at Sherwood, which is the area with the lowest rate at the moment, it stands at 393 per 100,000, with other districts and boroughs filling in that range in between. If we look at what's happening by different age groups, we see quite a varied picture. So amongst people who are over 60, the rates across Nottinghamshire County at the moment are pretty flat. And amongst people of working age, they're flat or going up very slightly. But if we look at what's happening amongst children and young people, then we can see that over the last fortnight amongst young people aged 12 to 17, there's been more than a doubling in the rate in that age group. So that means that in the last week, there have been about 1,000 12 to 17 year olds who've tested positive in Nottinghamshire County. And amongst 5 to 11 year olds, a further 846 or so young people testing positive. In contrast to that, I think it's worth setting the context that although these increasing rates may, in the weeks ahead, exert some further upward pressure on the activity we see in our hospitals, I think, as we'll hear shortly, the Covid-related activity in our hospitals at the moment is relatively stable. But I think it's really important to be reminded at this point that although those restrictions from earlier on in the year are largely lifted and so many people now are vaccinated, it is still possible to catch Covid-19. In fact, it is still possible to catch Covid even if you are fully vaccinated. We are still experiencing very high rates nationally and regionally. And that means that we each still need to do everything we can to protect ourselves and others. And there are just a handful of things, basic things, we can be doing to follow through on that. First of all, I'd urge everyone to take any and every opportunity to get vaccinated this autumn and winter. So whether we're thinking about the Covid vaccination or indeed a seasonal flu vaccination that you would be eligible for, or indeed other annual immunisations that you receive, take every opportunity you can to protect yourself. And in doing that, to also help protect the NHS and care services in Nottinghamshire. Please continue with all those basic measures that you're familiar with now. That frequent handwashing, the face covering in enclosed public spaces, making sure that there is plenty of fresh air and ventilation if you're in a working space with other people. All of these measures continue to be really important, basic things, which protect us and those around us. You can, of course, continue to get access to asymptomatic testing. We were pleased to learn today, in the last couple of days, that government will continue to fund that through to the end of the calendar year. And in Nottinghamshire County, we're pleased therefore to continue to make that available to residents. So with such high rates, now is a good time to make that part of your weekly routine. You can get hold of those LFT tests online or collect them from many community pharmacists. And if you want to find out more information, you can get that from nottinghamshire.gov.uk. And then finally, let me remind you once again that if you do get symptoms of coronavirus, it's really important still that you get tested right away and isolate because that's the way that we continue to stop the spread and enable us to keep our schools and economy open. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'll hand over finally to Amanda from the NHS.
Morning, thank you. So the number of people that we have in hospital with coronavirus has remained relatively stable for some weeks now. We have seen a slight decline this week. 175 people in our hospitals were on the 28th of September. 21 of those people needing intensive care. But new admissions do continue to fluctuate still. So we are definitely in a stable position at the moment. The NHS remains very busy in all areas and that is responding to a wide range of health conditions as well as coronavirus. As we head towards winter, it's really important that you protect yourself as much as possible. So please take up your flu vaccine and your coronavirus booster as soon as you get your invites and as soon as you get the opportunity. Vaccines do remain critical in helping us to return to a more normal way of life. 81% of our over 18s are now fully vaccinated, so that's really good news. But it still isn't too late for you to get your first or second dose and you can walk into your local facility or book an appointment. For 16 to 18 year olds, you can now book as well as walk in, whichever you prefer. Our vaccines for 12 to 15 year olds are now well underway in schools. Please check details from your schools. We're encouraging parents and children, young people, to take up the offer of a vaccine and minimise the disruption to schooling and social life going forward. We've also started the coronavirus booster campaign. We're in the early stages of that, just as we did in the first phase of the vaccination programme. We're focusing on the most vulnerable people, care homes, people over 80s, and also those who are in close contact with our most vulnerable residents. So frontline health and care workers are again an early focus for the booster programme. When time is ready for you, you will receive your invite. We will be covering all over 50s and people with health conditions that make them more vulnerable to the pandemic. So you will receive your invitation in due course for your vaccine and we really encourage you to take that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you to all our panellists. I'll open the floor to questions now. Again, for the purpose of the recording, if you can identify yourself and the media that you represent, that would be really helpful. So if you put your hand up, I'm happy to come to you on time if there are any questions. Hugh, Hugh Caswell.
Hello, Hugh from BBC Nottingham. This is probably best to David and to Jonathan. The weather has obviously turned in the last few days. People will probably want to be indoors more. But would you both still encourage people to be outdoors when they can in these colder and wetter months?
Thank you, Hugh. David, would you like to go first?
Yeah, sure. I, within my public health portfolio, have other areas such as physical activity, sport and diet. So I'm always going to encourage everyone to spend time outside in the fresh air whenever they're possible, obviously wrap up, wrap up warm and go out prepared. But our parks and open spaces are open all year round, not just during the summer months and would encourage people to make use of them all year round. I do recognise that that is not going to be appropriate for everyone and meetings will take place more indoors and people will meet up with others. And therefore, I just encourage people to, you know, not all the time, but they can occasionally open the window to allow air to circulate on occasions. And if they're meeting in public spaces, you know, wearing a face covering when walking around a restaurant or a pub is also a good measure to be taking.
Thank you, David. Jonathan, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add one comment to what David's covered really well already. And that's just to acknowledge that, of course, over the last year or so, there are many people whose work has required them to be in work routinely in any case. But for some of us, we've been out of the work environment, working from home for some time. And many people across Nottinghamshire will be starting to return to offices or have been starting to return to office environments. So what now goes in my bag when I'm required to go into work is a jumper because the weather is turning cooler. And it's good that when I go into work, I find that the windows are open to get plenty of fresh air and ventilation. But of course, without a jumper, you're going to sit there and freeze. So on a practical note, to help us all with keeping going with these basic measures, we probably now need to furnish ourselves with a bit of warmth for those of us who are working in an office environment. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Top tips for the autumn. Hugh, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, Jonathan's almost preempted me a little bit there with his answer as well. Obviously, furlough ended yesterday, so more and more people, it seems, are, you know, back in workplaces now. And if someone feels uncomfortable, say they don't feel like their workplace is doing enough to try and limit the spread of Covid, what should they do? What would you say to them? What can they do?
That's a good question.
I'm happy to start off on that, if you want, Steve. So I think it's really helpful when on an individual level, we're exercising that kind of ownership and responsibility for health and safety in the work environment because very clearly that is a shared responsibility between employees and employers. And I'm content that across Nottinghamshire, there'll be employers who will be keen to engage with their staff about making sure that all the right arrangements are in place in their work environment. And I think there'll be arrangements in different organisations around how that is best done. So I think make sure you engage in a conversation with your employer and as part of that kind of wider health and safety view.
Thank you, Jonathan. David, did you want to add anything?
No, not really. As far as I can add, I just echo that sentiment. I think it's, these are important conversations to be having and raising. And therefore, just encourage anyone who has concerns or is not feeling comfortable to have those conversations with their line managers and with other members of their organisation to raise awareness of it.
Thank you, David. Hugh, thanks for the question. The next hand I could see was Alex Hulse. Alex?
Hi, guys. Alex Hulse here from Capital and Smooth. Just a very quick one around, obviously, the numbers that you've provided obviously suggest that things are quite stable. Of course, we're going into winter and, you know, things might change. And I think things can change quite rapidly. And of course, Nottingham City Council has changed its guidance on mass wearing with regards to the messaging and that people should be wearing at mass when particularly on public transport. I've not seen that necessarily from the county council side. And I didn't know whether that was, you know, whether messaging was being shared or whether that was going to change or whether it was just based on rates really and how things are looking across the county. Because of course, the city and the county are obviously very intertwined. And, you know, people move into the city, move out of the city, into the county quite rapidly. So I just didn't know whether you might be able to talk me through whether that was changing or whether it wasn't changing the guidance for the county.
I can pick that up, Steve.
Thank you.
First instance, and David might help confirm or correct on some detail if I miss anything from a city perspective. From a county perspective, I think you'll find a really strong degree of commonality between what we're recommending to residents in the county to what is recommended in the city. The relationship between the local authorities and transport providers may be slightly different in the city from what it is in the county. And of course, certainly in the county, they are independent organisations. So the advice that we'll be promoting is the government's advice around this. And as I said earlier on, with rates so high across the county, rising nationally as well, we need to keep in mind that it is still possible to catch coronavirus even when we've had one of these really very effective vaccines. And with that in mind, it's important that we continue with all of the basic measures. So not only with face coverings in enclosed public spaces and transport and so on, but also with the frequent handwashing. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, with the fresh air and ventilation in working spaces as well. So I think there'll be a high degree of commonality in what it is that we're trying to promote across county and city. But David, I don't know if you want to comment in more specifically about city?
Yeah, I'd just say that obviously wearing a face mask remains free choice of the individual. It's with rates relatively high and with an uptick in rates and an increase in rates over the last few weeks, we feel those who are going out into indoor enclosed public spaces and mixing with numbers of people who they don't normally mix with or regularly mix with and that they don't necessarily know, so particularly on public transport, then people should be considering wearing a face covering for those settings and thinking about how they can take those simple actions to protect the community and those around them who they don't know and may be vulnerable.
Thank you, David. Alex, did you have a follow-up question?
No, that's great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Connor Thompson.
Hello, sorry, yeah. Hi, everybody. Just touching on sort of the hands, face, space message. Obviously, with the fuel and the petrol drama that's been happening, a lot of people have been rushing to the pumps, as you'd imagine, sort of touching the same pumps, that sort of thing. Can you sort of attribute that to any rising cases?
Thank you, Connor. Who would like to have a go at that one?
Happy to jump in.
David?
Yeah. No, is the simple answer. I know that many businesses, including petrol stations, will be taking a number of measures, including, you know, regularly cleaning. And everyone can take the simple actions in terms of handwashing and using hand gels if they're out and about and don't have access to tap or somewhere to wash their hands. Then, you know, I think there's an individual level of responsibility in terms of being able to continue that process and take those simple actions. It's not something that we can currently. And I don't think it's something that we will be able to attribute to a number of cases within the city or the county, if I speak with Jonathan's behalf now.
Yeah, I agree with what David said there. I think, Connor, your question's really helpful though. It's a helpful reminder, isn't it, that although much transmission is airborne, actually, we can also pass on coronavirus from surfaces that have been touched. And I think it's, you know, it's a good reminder that the risk of transmission increases wherever we're coming into close contact with other people or into contact with surfaces which other people have touched. And for that reason, the frequent handwashing as well as the face covering in enclosed public spaces, both of those are really important.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, David, for the answers. Connor, did you have a follow-up question?
No, that's brilliant. Thank you for your answers.
Thank you. I can't see any more hands at the moment. Would anybody else have a question they'd like to ask of the panel while we have them here?
Yeah, could I actually just jump in with one more of us? Okay, Steve?
Oh, we'll allow it, Hugh.
It's just while I've got you here, it's just like a sort of a brief factual question for Amanda, I suppose. You mentioned that the booster programme has started. Has it started in primary care yet? Are GP surgeries and pharmacies starting it yet? I was told that a surgery in Netherfield was saying that they think that they're the first to be offering it in Nottinghamshire from today. I wasn't sure if that was right or if it's, you know, there are more surgeries offering it across the city and county.
Yes, thank you, Hugh. So we do have a number of surgeries that are offering and starting to invite and also visiting care homes. And over the next few weeks, more will be coming online quite rapidly. Also, the local pharmacists as well, where they're offering that. We have a high number of local pharmacists also offering vaccine boosters. So those will come fully online over the next few weeks.
But are there any that have started?
Yes, some have started, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I realise I've jumped in ahead of Owen now, so apologies, Owen. It was cheeky of me.
That's okay. Thanks, Hugh. Thanks, Amanda, for picking up the question. Owen?
You don't worry, it was actually your question that reminded me of something I was going to ask anyway. So I was behind you in the queue. It's something that comes out of the meeting earlier this week. I think it was, which one was? I've just got the notes here. But it was to suggest the city council's health and wellbeing board, that vaccination uptake is slightly lower for people between 25 and 40 sort of parent age. Do we know why that is and what's being done to address that, I suppose, is the question?
Thanks, Owen. And Owen, you're from Notts TV?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. So a question around vaccine, lower vaccine uptake in the city around the 20s to 40s. Amanda, is that one for you or for David?
I can't yet. Happy to. So yes, we are seeing some lower rates in younger adults in the city, but also elsewhere as well. We're very focused on making sure that people do still have every opportunity to take up those vaccines and very much would encourage people to do that. Can understand in younger age groups, it perhaps doesn't seem such a serious illness with such severe consequences as often. But people of any age can become seriously unwell. And I would remind people that we are now seeing a younger cohort of people in hospital than we did previously because more older people are vaccinated. So it's something we are concerned about. We do target areas, for example, with the vaccine bus going around to specific areas and target age groups. But it's not too late to have your jab, your first and second jab. You can walk into local sites and get your jab. So please, it's still very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. David, did you want to add anything? I think Amanda's covered a lot of it there.
Yeah, no, I think Amanda's covered most of it there. Obviously, we continue to work with Amanda and the team to identify where it's best to take the vaccination bus and take other pop-up clinics and how to encourage people to access. There is really good access within the city to vaccinations. That age group often is obviously in work and therefore will have sometimes challenges with access. But the vaccination centres have good availability and opening hours to allow that flexibility for the age range to visit the vaccination centres and have their vaccine. So I think that's an important thing just to outline. And also, as I said earlier, I think our younger population have shown by stepping up and getting vaccinated, sort of a shining example to the rest of the residents of Nottingham City. And hopefully, those who have put off getting a vaccine or who are hesitant can look at the younger people in Nottingham City and think about whether they would reconsider and take up the vaccination.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Amanda. Owen, did you have a follow-up question?
No, thank you. That was fantastic. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Owen. Are there any more questions from the media? I'll pause for just a moment. There's no more questions. I'll just briefly turn back to our panellists just to check. We've covered everything that we wanted to cover. I think we probably have. And thank you, Jonathan, for... I know it's been frustrating having audio but not video. I just wondered, are there any more points or any messages we'd like to leave before we go? It might be that we've covered everything. I just wanted to make sure.
Nothing from myself. It would have been great to see Jonathan's work jumper, but otherwise it's been great.
It'll be a treat for you for a fortnight's time.
Thank you. Amanda, are you happy?
I'm happy. Thank you.
Wonderful. That's great. Thank you. In that case, I'll just say thank you to David and to Jonathan and Amanda, as always. And thank you for Abby, who's here from the County Council comms team for supporting with this. And thanks to the media, it is really important, like the questions we've had around vaccinations, getting that message out is absolutely crucial for keeping people up to date with what's happening with COVID-19. So I'll make this recording available. It'll be on YouTube and I'll share the link with you shortly. Beyond that, I wish you all a happy Friday and have a lovely weekend. And we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.